Good evening, this is the Rutland Town Planning Commission and it's July fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-two. Welcome everyone, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. There's some sentiment here that we should make this meeting as concise as possible to help Bill out with the minutes later, but we don't have a whole lot anyway. And I don't want to stymie any conversations or any questions. So let's start with the approval of the agenda for tonight.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? I might move things around a little bit in old business to keep things together, but that's nothing.
I think we trust you.
Ready for the question, all those in favor of the agenda approving the agenda, say hi.
Hi.
Opposed, okay. I don't believe there's any public here to comment tonight, so let's move down to new business. And the town, oh, it was about a week ago, got an email from a couple of business people who were interested in setting up, is it a retail cannabis operation?
Yes.
Not the, not the, um, the other kind, that the town voted the integrated, integrated license?
Correct, this would be an adult use recreational cannabis license for a storefront dispensary.
Okay, so we have Matt Barnes with us tonight and Thomas McCree. And why don't we start with one of you or both of you just describing what your plans are?
Yeah, for sure. First and foremost, thank you for allowing us to join the agenda tonight and kind of talk to you guys. As mentioned, I'm Matt and this is my partner Tom. Tom has owned and operated a medical marijuana dispensary in Connecticut since two thousand and eighteen. And we just, we really wanted to come on here and join and just first off introduce ourselves, try to get a better understanding of the town's kind of zoning and permitting ordinances that may or may not apply to, you know, certain cannabis establishments. We have been pre-qualified by the Vermont Cannabis Control Commission or the Cannabis Board for the retail license. And we understand that Rutland has opted in to allow the retail dispensaries. So our, our brand is, I mean, it's, it's myself, Tom and three others at, you know, right now and we're interested in coming into Rutland to potentially open up a retail dispensary. We pride ourselves on, you know, being compliant, customer education, a really like high-quality kind of customer central brand. And we're not one of these massive corporations that, you know, if somebody tries to come in and and pitch you on this, you end up talking to a lawyer or somebody down the chain. I mean, myself and Tom are the ones grinding day to day trying to figure out the best way to make this work for everybody. So we're the ones who who the town will be dealing with in a big capacity and moving this forward. So I guess we were just, we kind of wanted to, I guess, get your perspective on it, see if there's anything that you guys were looking at where there are certain places that you kind of envisioned maybe a dispensary going. Are there any zoning, I know that you said there's no zoning, but any planning ordinances? And kind of your overall thoughts on it, really?
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, this is new to us, a couple of ballot issues passed in March at town meeting. One for retail and the other for integrated cannabis operations. And it states that they would be placed in established commercial areas, which is a little tricky since we don't have zoning. We've got, we have where we want particular land uses mapped out in town. And then we have, we do have some established commercial areas. And I'm not sure where you folks are thinking about putting your business. The most established commercial area, sorry, is in the southern part of the town, south of the city where there are some box stores and auto dealers and that sort of things. Grocery stores.
Yeah, you know, we've kind of looked around a little bit, I don't know that, we've kind of started to look at some, some real estate potential options, I know that real estate in this industry is incredibly difficult to find. So we've kind of started to peruse that market, but really haven't settled on anything. I know that we were looking up on like the Route Four area, the US Route Four. I know that that kind of goes out of the city and up through the town. But we're not, like I said, we're not really settled on anything. And I think that was one of the biggest questions was like, like I had asked, where you guys really envisioned or in an ideal world, where you would like one to be?
Well, I'm not sure we can answer that, I mean, I think the Select Board put the issues on the ballot. And they might have had an idea where those were, I just don't know offhand where those areas are. Go ahead.
No, I was just saying, yeah, that, and that's totally fine, right? We're completely open. So, yeah.
I can go to them with that question.
The city, the city is not, is not allowing this, I don't know.
Oh, I don't know what the cities stand.
You guys, have you looked at Rutland City or that's not, is it Rutland City? I'm not sure there.
Yeah, Rutland City has approved it as well for retail use.
And are you looking at both?
I think, truthfully, I think we're keeping our options open. I think one of the things that we're starting to realize as we go through the process in Connecticut is that sometimes where you want to go or, or sometimes your ideal location and where you want to go isn't necessarily where you can go. We know that whether it's Rutland City, Rutland Town, just the area around Rutland itself, we really like, I think first and foremost, we like the town and the area, but I think the proximity to the ski mountains and the resorts up there is obviously beneficial to everybody. You know, I know that there's, there's an optional one percent tax that the towns are allowed to implement on this, so the greater the revenue, the greater tax and kind of kickback to the town. So we're kind of open to really all of it.
What would be your ideal location and building to go into?
Our ideal location is really just a high-traffic area. Something that is around other well-known kind of brands where people are going to be traveling to anyways. Roads that see a high average annual daily traffic. Preferably is some sort of probably standalone building, nothing in big, too crazy in size, somewhere around a three thousand square foot space, so in terms of the exact location or address, I think really as long as it kind of hits on a number of those points would be, would be a good spot for us.
Norm?
Yes, thank you. Would you envision, would you envision building your own building or purchasing one?
Yeah, I think we haven't necessarily, we haven't really discussed as a group building anything, whether that would be a land lease or a land purchase and then, and then building out. I think I think that would probably be difficult to build for two reasons. One, the process to build something from scratch is, is a long and lengthy process with all the permits to the town that you have to get with ordering lumber and just frankly, the cost associated with that because the construction cost has gone up so much. I mean, I just finished remodeling my kitchen in Connecticut and it took us a year to get a stove. So it's just, that process to me is, is kind of difficult right now. We have not ruled out the idea of purchasing a building. And in Connecticut, I think we're exploring whether it's purchasing or lease-to-buy options or strictly leasing, I think all of those are absolutely on the table.
Barbara, may I ask another question?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. Do you have any operating ventures of this type at this time?
Yeah, so, do you want to answer that, Tom?
Yeah, sure, so, you know, nice to meet you all, Thomas McCree. So I have been involved in the industry since about two thousand and thirteen and I was, I've been licensed since two thousand and eighteen in Connecticut. So we're one of eighteen medical marijuana operators. We are in Litchfield County in the city of Torrenton. We service about twenty-five hundred medical patients right now, thirteen employees, four pharmacists on staff. So we just actually expanded in Connecticut for adult use. And, you know, we were looking for, you know, other expanded opportunities to bring our expertise and, you know, looking at the different landscapes in New England. You know, Vermont seems to have a very good regulatory scheme where we think we would, you know, be a good addition to the program. And then, you know, Rutland seems to, you know, be open to it, so we really want to bring our expertise in what we do and compliance and security and education to a town like yours.
Thank you. But if I understand it correctly, you have no retail operations going at this point? If I understood your comment.
So currently, we did apply for the conversion in Connecticut from medical to hybrid, which would allow us to serve both medical patients and adult-use patients. So we've already submitted our application and we should be hearing back from the State Department within the next month.
And your proposal here would be hybrid?
I don't believe that Vermont's open for medical at this point, so it would strictly be a retail license.
Okay, well, that's my question, okay, thank you.
And refresh my memory, what's the approval you have from the state of Vermont?
So we were granted pre-qualification for a retailer.
And that means the next step is what?
So September first will be the formal application. So we've already gone through background checks, business information. You know, we're already formatted, you know, we're already incorporated within Vermont. So the next process would just be submitting our, our business plan and a couple of the other criteria that they require, you know, to get full approval, but we're kind of, you know, halfway through at this point.
Would this be a new business entity, new name and such? If you had an operation in Vermont?
Yeah, so the state of Vermont does require that we have a Vermont Incorporated business. So we have incorporated already in Vermont State.
And the name is?
So we kind of have a highway brand. We've been applying in Connecticut for four different retail licenses that are pending. And that name would be, it's under the highway umbrella, but it would be whatever highway we ended up. We were looking for access for residents and commuters, so potentially if we were on Route Four or Route Seven, we would go with Highway Seven or Highway Four.
As your name.
Correct.
Yeah, those would be the most established commercial areas of Rutland Town.
Now, is your town planning on creating a cannabis commission of your, of your own? I know that's, that's an option.
I don't know. It's not required. We don't, yeah, we're just starting in this arena. It's not required as far as you know, or is it?
Is it required or optional, do you know, from your, from speaking with the state?
Yeah, I, my understanding is it is optional, you do not have to, but you can elect to create a commission and then, you know, report that to the Cannabis Control Board. And then that will give you authority to approve or deny applicants that, that come before you. So I wasn't sure if you were, you know, deciding on, you know, limiting the amount of potential retailers within your, within your borders or not, but we can definitely forward you information on that as well.
Yeah. You tell us what's going on here.
It's such a new industry for everybody, like I think everybody's trying to figure it out kind of as we go along, really. I mean, we're, we're doing the same thing, so you mean, you see state to state and what we've looked at is some towns are crazy restrictive, some are super open, some are, a lot of it is really kind of personal preference based on what the zoning and planning commission of the town feels what they, what they want to do.
Norm, did you have another question?
Oh, it's really minutia, so it's just, doesn't really have much to do with the core of this.
You know, I was thinking I would just suggest too, is, as you guys talk between Rutland Town and the city, it's pretty easy for people around here, I think, I'm just, I got confused a little bit between Rutland because we're the town, I know that's kind of this minor little thing. But as you're talking about the town, if you kind of go at Rutland Town versus the city, you know what I mean? It was, when you first said Rutland, I'm thinking, are we talking the town? Are we talking the city? Because kind of people here consider it two different things, so just as you're talking, you know, just a suggestion, it's just easier to follow.
Oh, no, it's
it's minor, but it's easy to follow.
It's a political thing, historical thing.
Yeah.
Are you looking at both the city and the town?
Yeah, I mean, we would prefer, you know, to be in Rutland Town. But, you know, we know that there's, you know, going to be a lot of interest within Rutland City as well. There, there's, there seems to be a little bit more real estate available within the city. But, you know, we kind of already, you know, set our sights on Rutland Town and that's what we would like to pursue. You know, if that's, if that's plausible.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions for us that we probably can't answer?
Well, I guess I would just be interested, you know, if we did get approval, you know, come the end of September or October and we, you know, we were able to secure a property. You know, my understanding is that we would be treated as this, under the same zoning regulations as another, you know, similar retail use. So I wasn't sure what that process, you know, exactly would entail us if we had to get, you know, local approval. You know, what the application might look like and what the requirements might be.
Not much.
Yeah, it's kind of non-existent. There isn't much there, you know, because of the lack of zoning.
If it's an existing piece, if it's an existing building.
Right.
There's very little.
Yeah, unless you, unless you, you know, liquor, you know, licenses or something like that, but that's, that's not applicable here. Norm?
Just a suggestion. We have no zoning and we have no regulations addressing this particular business industry, et cetera. It would make some sense to visit with the Select Board to make your presence known. This, at this point, we have no ordinances over which we are charged with any responsibilities, but I think the, the politics of the matter would suggest you or your council or both appear before the Select Board at whatever time is convenient to you and them. And go forward. You know, we appreciate you coming, of course, and it's very helpful to have the information and, but we can't offer you much.
Yeah, we do like to hear about what people are planning to do in town. This is like one of the few ways we can find that out is, are these meetings. Who did I cut off, Matt?
No, I was just saying, absolutely, yeah, makes total sense.
Yeah, the Select Board meets next Tuesday night, I could bring this to them that night. And, and then they can decide, you know, when, when they, when they'd like to speak to you.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Yeah, that'd be great. Really appreciate your time.
Yeah, it's probably too late to get on their agenda now.
We got some time, so I think we'll be all right.
Right, exactly. Yeah.
Do we have their contact information to get back to?
I've got their emails.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you two. Okay, thanks for joining us, I'm glad we can do this remotely and not have to, having come all this way.
Absolutely, yeah, thank, thank you so much for the time, we really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a great night, guys.
Okay, you too.
Bye, thank you.
Okay. On down to old business. Bill moved, added some things to your packets, he moved things around on the agenda a little bit. There's nothing new on the informational building permit form update with the town attorney, I just haven't had time yet to really do that. So, moving back up to new ordinances that we may be working, may want to work on. I'm not getting, I'm not getting a good reaction from the Select Board about doing anything regarding farms.
Me livestock.
The livestock thing, yeah. I mean, we can try, and even with the, the building permit, the informational building permit, they think that the process is working, particularly after the Honeybee Place. You know, issues that came up, they thought in the long run it worked. So even then, they said that they would look at what we come up with and then determine whether we need to, to make those changes.
They're now finally taking action and acting on these. That's what they did with, you know, with the pocket one, and so I think now they're, they're taking a direction that anytime something occurs that hasn't got a permit in, they're going to go after them. So that, that's a big change right there.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, you know, get them in, talk to them face to face, do a hearing, air the grievances if there are any, so.
And they have done that? Or they're planning on?
Well, they have done, they've done it with one applicant so far. And, and so basically, you know, I think they're going to be, be willing to forgive a mistake that somebody makes early on, it doesn't know about the permit process. But the next time, it's going to be a penalty.
Yeah, and maybe a part of our role can be just publicizing these permits a little bit more.
And identifying who the people are there, we'd be the first probably to know the people that weren't.
I had somebody, that's an attorney, that came in to the office right after the circle came out. He came right in and he said, I saw your article in the circle, he says, I started building a sugar house or whatever, whatever it was you were building and, and he came in and made a permit right out, right out of the spot. He said he didn't, he wasn't aware that we had building permits and that's kind of what's going on there.
Yeah.
Getting the word out and, and putting the hammer down when something goes wrong is, is going to get the word out and and maybe this will work better.
Yeah, and if it's okay to jump down to the Honeybee Place update.
Oh, can I just add, sorry, really quick? Just that I agree that our, our role on, a good role for us to be education and trying to focus on that as much as possible. You know, to avoid having to do the violation, go through violation process. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mary Beth, yeah. And, yeah, the Circle, the Front Porch Forum, our Facebook page, we can try and widen the net there of who we're trying to get to listen. So the, anything, anything more you want to say on the Honeybee Place, Howard? Right now?
I know they had a hearing and I'm assuming they've, I don't know the details, but I'm assuming that they've resolved the penalty, I believe, but I really don't know the details.
I think they settled on an amount.
On an amount, yes, yes. I don't know what that was, but they did, there was some penalty, I believe that he had to pay. And he, I guess, said, okay, and it won't happen again type of thing. So, and I also think they said if he's going to do more up there that he needs to notify Act two fifty because of the
Right.
size of the complex.
And they're going to keep an eye on the stormwater issues? What's going through the culvert there? The town will be keeping an eye on that. So is that just one of the structures, one of the new structures that was involved in those discussions? Or all of them?
Well, it was, it was that new structure, but, but what that did was he invited the listeners up and he gave us a tour throughout the whole bit, all the buildings and everything. So we, we got a chance to see what we hadn't seen before. He gave us a tour through the whole site. And, you know, with that, he's, when he does something more, he's supposedly he's ready to know, you know, make a building permit and go through the proper steps.
But the Select Board was only concerned kind of with one building? Is that what they were kind of focused on?
Well, I think what triggered this thing was the stormwater. That's what, that's what got it going, when the highway crew had to go up and there was a problem with drains that got plugged, the culverts that got plugged and different things, and that's what, that's what really got it going, plus a new construction right next door to it.
So they kind of addressed the whole complex as a, as a whole, kind of? Do you think that's how the Select Board was, kind of addressing all of it? Including the stormwater?
Well, yeah, yeah, they were, but as listeners, we had picked up, we had picked up other things that were, that were there.
Right.
Fortunately enough, you know, working with nine-one-one and with some of the new photography that they have, they were able to provide us with information that if we couldn't get on the property, we had a picture of it, with measurements, and that's kind of the way we were going.
So your office has what it needs and we don't need any more informational building permits filled out for, for that development?
Well, if he does anything more, he's up to date now.
He's up to date now.
Up to date now, he submitted a building permit for his latest building, so he's, he's, should be up to date now with that, but if he starts something new, then it's another permit. They're good to let him go with what he's got, finish what he's got, but.
Anything else on that? So, um, back to work on maybe some other ordinances while we're waiting for the town attorney and me to finish up on the building permit one. Does anyone want to work with me on, we talked about a noise ordinance? To finish up on the, the building permit one. Um, does anyone wanna work with me on, um, we talked about a noise ordinance? I know the city is also thinking about. Um, maybe um, taking a look at the uh, the noise that comes from some vehicles. Some vehicles that have been retrofitted with extras, loud mufflers or no mufflers or whatever. Um. We talked about noise and we talked about firearms, and I think we wanted to keep them separate. Um, and that's fine, or if they eventually get combined, that's fine too. Anyone have time to, to work with me on, on those and research what's out there, research what we have? And what we might propose?
I thought Andy was interested in the firearms ordinance.
I think he was, yep. So Norm is volunteering Andy.
Now Norman is saying that he would work with Andy on that, but I have to tell you that I am. My availability is limited, but I, I would help.
Okay, yeah, no rush on these. Anyone else? Everyone's pretty busy. Okay, we'll just plug away on those. Um. The townwide celebration on August twenty seventh. If anyone's available, um, we could use, we could use some help, but the, the Rutland Town Planning Commission booth. Probably will be a, a, an open tent and a table. Um, so that's August twenty seventh from ten to two. Does anyone have any ideas for a banner for the planning commission? Do you wanna do just the standard thing you roll out and, you know, connect to the ends of the table? Or does someone have some other ideas?
I think that's the best.
You think that's the best way?
I do.
And how about the design?
Can't help you there. No, I just think that if there's, if you think about one of those tents, like if it's one of those easy ups.
Yep.
There's not enough headroom to do anything up above, hooked to the upper part. And then beyond that, what else is there really to attach anything to? So it almost happened.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to think of what like, companies like Awesome Graphics do. If they've got good alternatives or not.
Or you could get a sign like one of those political, you know, the, the, a way out in front of the tent.
Yeah. Poke it in the ground?
Yeah. Or a couple that was, it made sense size wise.
Yeah. Not sure how often we would use.
Yeah.
Any of these. So I don't wanna spend too much money.
That's why maybe the political ones might be the cheapest, don't you think?
They might.
Gotta be the way they buy those by the hundreds.
Yeah, yeah, the, the more you buy, the cheaper they are, but.
Right.
Okay, um. So yeah, let me know if you are available and I'll, if I have enough people, I'll, I'll put some shifts together. For us, but it's just, it's just for hours, so it's not a big deal. It won't take too much of anyone's day. Okay, yeah. Your, your level of. Excitement or whatever kind of overwhelms me. So. Okay, um. Anyone else have, um, let's, we'll move down to announcements. Any others to bring to the group? Um, going once? Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's um, much else to report from the select board. So let's do the minutes of June twenty third. Um, just before we do that, Bill did send some other information in your packets. About the flood hazard development permit. I'm not, he didn't discuss this with me beforehand. So I'm not quite sure where it came from, um, if it's something. We have to do, we've been ordered to do, it, it's, I'm at a loss.
I think it's something he found that we need to, it needs to be part of that building permit. Um, to be incorporated with it.
But then he came up with this pretty extensive flood hazard area development permit, which I'm not sure where it came from.
That's part of what happened with Honeybee. I mean, maybe that's, maybe that was triggered by their discussion or something.
Yeah, yeah, but I would really like to hear from Bill. Sorry about hitting the mic still here, um. With a little more background on these. Yeah, it's easy enough to include it in the informational building permit, and I'll probably do that with, with our town attorney. Uh, I'm just not sure if we need everything in the flood hazard area development permit. There's a lot of fees there. So. Which may be warranted. Just don't have the background information. Okay, back to the minutes of June twenty third.
At the top of the page, it lists the members present. Um. For some reason, my name was omitted and I, I participated and voted. Um, throughout the meeting.
Okay.
And I have sent an email to. Uh, Bill, but of course he's not in the office until Monday. You know, so.
I'll just, for, what looks to be typos on a very first page, a very last line. It talks about our town business will be, is that supposed to be first on the survey?
Our town business, um, yeah. They'll be leading off the survey, first on the survey, yeah. Good one.
Then. The second page of under announcements, the mid page. The second to last sentence in that uh, paragraph or, and, and number four, item number four. But the, the second to last sentence is, this is part of the planned larger. Is it Velo Mont? Is what that's supposed to be Vermont or what trail system? It's got.
It's V E L O M O N T, right, Mary Beth? It's Velo Mont, I believe.
Yes, that's right. Sorry, I'm having issues with my phone unmuting. I'm traveling and. But yeah, E L O M O N T. I also, if it's okay to add something after the minutes about the celebration, I will, but I don't wanna interrupt the minutes.
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to apologize about the mute.
I thought you were pretty quiet out there.
Yeah, all right, so I will hopefully not have the same issue, but maybe give me a minute after the minutes before we adjourn.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, so I think uh, this is part of the, the planned larger Velo Mont Trail System. Anything else? Norm, anything we missed?
No, I, I didn't, no, not that I saw.
Okay, does someone want to move to approve the minutes with those changes?
So moved.
Thanks, Norm. Is there a second? Howard seconds it. Ready for a vote? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
I'll abstain if I was not there.
Okay, thanks, Jerry. And uh, for the record, um, in attendance tonight is Jim Hall. Jerry Sterns, Howard Burgess, Norm Cohen, and Mary Beth Holy and myself. Just so we get that right, um. So. Uh, the regular members, Jim, you would be an alternate, right? Three, four, five.
I don't think it's up to seven, isn't it?
Right. Never mind. Should've done that at the beginning of the meeting, but just as well. No harm done. Okay, Mary Beth, are you there?
I'm, I'm here. Um, so when you were talking about the townwide celebration, I am planning to join for half of the time. Um, my parents are gonna be visiting um, from Florida, but I, I'm thinking like non-town residents can go. Uh, but, so we would just plan to all go together and then I'll be at the booth for like half of the time?
Oh, that'd be great.
Sure.
You thinking of the morning or the afternoon?
Um, I'm not sure, probably the afternoon.
Okay. Great. Yeah, we'll, we'll just have a booth there, we'll talk about. We'll talk about what we do, we'll talk about the Pocket Park.
Yeah.
And whatever else comes up. And the energy survey, the energy survey kicks off.
Yes.
At that event, so we'll have some copies of it. Maybe it's a QR code, people can do it online. Okay, anything else?
No?
Anyone else? Okay, it's a beautiful evening. I think we'd love to go enjoy another beautiful evening this summer. It's been a great summer.
We adjourn.
Thank you, Jerry. There has been a motion to adjourn. We are, we're adjourned. Thank you.